What did you request?
See, that's what happened.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to the July 2nd, 2012 Washtegul City Council Meeting. And ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rose, what did you call the role, please?
Councilmember Plinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
There.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, do we have any correspondence?
No, we do not.
Takes us to our first opportunity for any members of the public that may want to address council to do so. We certainly invite you up to the microphone. This evening, however, just to warn you ahead of time, we're only going on two-minute timings, not three, just so we can try and get through the entire evening. Mr. Olson, good evening.
Mayor Guard, city council members, good evening. The six council members have a daunting task in front of you to replace John Russell on the council. There are several strong candidates to select from, but first, what made John Russell special? How do you replace him? You should select a candidate who will exhibit the qualities that made John Russell special. John was a watchdog and guardian of the spending of the tax dollars, a person of integrity, and his word is and was his bond, plus many other attributes that made him very special. The citizens voted twice to have him represent them, knowing he had those qualities. I urge you to consider during your deliberations the candidate that best resembles the qualities that John brought to the council table. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Harvey. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, seeing none, we will go into the consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of three items: our council, city council minutes of June 18th, 2012, our workshop minutes of June 25th, 2012, and our regular accounts payable claims in the amount of $378,926.44. Mr. Mayor. I understand that we do have a correction to some wording that are in the minutes of June 18th, so we'll be pulling that item off of the consent agenda.
I was going to ask unanimous consent that we approve the consent agenda with that modification to the minutes, which was distributed to us by...
You can certainly do that if you'd like. I don't believe the public knows what the change is, so that's the only reason I'm pulling it. Would you like to move forward now as consent of items B and C?
Yes, unanimous consent on items B and C.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Council minutes of June 18th, 2012. I understand we have a change in regards to council comments. Under councilmember Shoemaker, the way the minutes currently read states shared his recent experience with the Civil Air Patrol in New Mexico. The change being made is councilmember Shoemaker shared his experience with emergency services training with the Civil Air Patrol in New Mexico. That is the only change to those minutes that I am aware of. Yes.
Good evening. The reason I ask for that change is that I wanted to relate this directly to the city. We have an emergency services mission. I train with the Civil Air Patrol in areas that I think would be helpful for that mission. And I wanted to make sure that was clarified, otherwise it doesn't make any sense for me to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the minutes for June 18th be approved with that change.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. That takes us to our new business for this evening, the first item being the appointment of a new council member to position number one. Per former councilmember Russell's resignation letter dated May 22, 2012, which was effective yesterday, July 1, 2012, I hereby declare that the Washtegul City Council position number one is now vacant. Per council direction and action at the June 4th, 2012 city council meeting, the vacancy has been advertised for more than three weeks, and applications, letters, and resumes have been received and validated as of June 26, 2012. There are seven applicants for the open seat. Late this afternoon, I did receive an email from applicant Rod Morris withdrawing his candidacy for the position. His email reads, "Mr. Mayor, this is my official notice to you. Due to illness, I am withdrawing my name from tonight's procedures. Thank you to all for considering my resume for the open council position. Signed, Rod Morris." The city council will now proceed into their approved process to appoint a new member to the Washtegul City Council. Mrs. Forsberg, would you take the floor and explain the procedure for this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, members of the community. Just to remind everyone how this will work, with the six remaining candidates, we're going to draw your name out of a basket to determine the order of interviews. Each candidate will be asked up to eight questions, capped at two minutes for each question. And then council will have the timeframe to go to executive session if necessary for discussion. Then we'll come back and do a weighted balloting measure. Each council member will have two votes. Their first vote will get 10 points; their second vote will get five points. And that should get us to two finalists. In the event of a tie, we will take the two that are tied and do the weighted ballot process again to limit it to just those two people until we have two clear finalists to go on to final round. We will then take time to interview the two finalists with one question from each council member, also capped at two minutes. And then each finalist will have a two-minute closing statement opportunity. Again, executive session could be entered into at that time, and then we'll come back and do a final vote. Hopefully, at that point, we'll do this more again and continue on with the agenda with choosing a new mayor pro tem. The council can go into executive at any time. We've just kind of put that process in place with the logical spot of where the executive sessions might be, but you may enter into it at any time at your desire.
Just a note for the audience and for council members, we do have, typically, we always try and have legal counsel present whenever we're in executive session. Unfortunately, our city attorney had emergency surgery this weekend and is not available this evening. State law, however, provides that we must have legal representation only in the cases of executive sessions that deal with litigation, and certainly, this evening is not litigation. So we're assured that we are fine in that count. So, Jennifer, where would you like to start? Are we going to draw some names?
We're going to draw some names. I'll have Trevor draw the first name.
And this is for the order of...
Interviews.
Interviews.
So...
Michael Norris.
Michael Norris will be first, and we're going to go through and pull all of them first, and then we'll situate you on where everyone will be. Number one will stay here in chambers. Number two through six will go to the side chambers and wait in there. And then after your interview, we'll escort you to another waiting area until we're completed with all the interviews. So number two will be...
Randall Ellis.
Number three.
Brent Bogart.
Number four.
Michelle Wagner.
Number five.
Maury Seacrest.
And number six would be Larry Wagner. So Mitch, if you would like to escort two through six to the side chambers, we'll bring a chair up for Mr. Norris. Mitch, if you could shut both doors also. Thank you.
Have you prepared the note-taking sheet for a candidate?
All of them. Your individual question?
Yeah.
Yep. Mitch, could you also check the temperature controls and see if we've got air on inside the room?
In here?
Yeah. It could start getting a little warm. We'll see how well it works.
I think with the doors closed, it helps regulate it better to where it should cool down.
It got down to seven. Should I go lower?
Maybe sixty-eight.
Mike, good evening.
Good evening.
Before we get started, I want to make sure and thank you for your service on the Parks Board with the city.
Thank you. You're welcome.
As you know, we've got a series of questions that we're going to ask you this evening. I'm going to start out with a couple of them, and then we'll go around the table by council members and see who else may have a question that they'd like to ask of you. The first question that I have from the packets that you were provided is what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and the community that you would like to highlight? And just before you get started, there is a two-minute limit for each of the questions themselves. I'm going to start a timer that'll stay green. Once you get to 30 seconds, it's going to turn yellow, and at the end of two minutes, it goes red.
Okay. Well, through my work as a project superintendent, I believe I've gained a lot of experience working with engineers, civil engineers, architects, and I have a real, quite a bit of familiarity with their terminology and issues that would come up during planning, discussions with the planning commission, as far as, you know, what site development and things like erosion control, water and sewer and traffic and things like that. And since I, my experience, most of the time, over the supervisory experience anyway, has been on public works projects. And I've had a lot of, been in a lot of meetings with a lot of government agencies, from WASDOT to school district, Washtegul School District, for instance, and the Port of Camas, Washtegul. And so I'm real comfortable doing that also. And, you know, and I feel that as my service on the Park Board goes, I'm familiar now with reading budgets and how the grant program is carried out and how that works. And working along with the Pella Park Board members has been a real good experience, so that's what, about what I have. Yeah, that'll be it, as far as I can think.
Thank you. The second question that we have are, what are the three highest priorities and/or issues that you believe that the city needs to address, and how would you propose to address those issues?
Well, one thing that's really important to me is that we just don't have enough for our young people to do in this community. You know, it's been a great place. I've raised two sons here. It's been a great place to live. I, you know, I have no regrets moving here whatsoever. And, you know, and they've been involved in a lot of things in this community, but I feel that we could do more, that we could, you know, and that's kind of what I've been working on a little bit with, you know, Parks Board. And I'm also concerned about the proposed train traffic that's going to be coming through town. It looks like a possibility of it, you know, and I'd like to, I'd like to see us work through that in a thoughtful manner that protects the citizens of this community and doesn't, you know, I'd like to see us deal with the impacts that are most likely going to come. I mean, it's not just coal trains we're talking about. The Port of Vancouver is also planning a large export facility for potash, and that's going to have several trains coming through also. So that's important to me, that we handle that, you know, in the best way possible. And, and I like, you know, I'm concerned about economic development, too, that we do deal with the traffic impacts along Highway 14, that we do that in, you know, a wise way that we work with the Port of Camas, Washtegul, to try to make that work the best for, you know, both entities, the city of Washtegul and the port. And, you know, I'm really encouraged by what's going on out there, that they're, have proposed Commerce Center coming in, that that's, it looks very promising.
Thank you. We're going to go into council member comments, and just so that we're not predictable, I've even put these together as random, so you never know who's going to come up where. Just a reminder for council that you're not required to ask a question, but you certainly are allowed to ask a question of each of the candidates. Once you've decided which question you're asking by your own rules, it has to be the same question for every single candidate. So with that, councilmember Freeman.
Hey, hey, luck of the draw. Well, Mr. Norris, it's good to meet you and good to, well, we've met in the past, I realize it, but, meet you here.
Nice to see you.
In this position. I'm thrilled to hear you say that your, one of your highest priorities is youth, because that's mine, too. And my question is, what do you see as the biggest challenge the youth of Washtegul deal with, and how should it be addressed?
Well, I think the biggest challenge is just lack of safe and, you know, things to do that are, that are, keep them out of trouble, that are healthy, that are, you know, a good recreation for them. And, you know, it would have been nice, I would have, you know, in years past, I remember when we were talking about doing a community center, it would have been nice to have that, have been able to afford to do that. I realized that was one of the big issues there. And also, when the Boys and Girls Club came to Camas, I was really encouraged to hear that, and I thought, well, you know, that, you know, that might help us, the kids in this town, too, but it just, it unfortunately got located just a little too far away for the kids in Washtegul. And so I think that, you know, we could really be looking at a few more alternative things that they could be doing. One thing I've been working on at the, in the Parks Board, and I introduced this proposal, was a bike skills park. It's, you know, my son is an active mountain biker, he, you know, and he's, he's worked with these trail building organizations, Northwest Trail Alliance, and they've even put in a small one right near his house, over, he lives over in northeast Portland, near Gateway, and they put in a small one there, and it's worked really well, you know, and it's, and it's, it didn't take up very much room, and so far, it's been positive for that community. And also, I visited one up, that they're doing up in Castle Rock here recently, and it's, it's a little bit bigger scale, and it's, it's probably going to attract families and people that, you know, that have money to spend, and it could be an economic development type thing. You know, the mountain biking community spends a lot of money on their equipment, and... So that's one thing I'm working on. That's one thing I'd like to maybe see us do, as a possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And the next question is from councilmember McDaniel.
Good evening, Mr. Norris.
Evening.
Thank you for coming, by the way. My question has to do with voting. We have verified that all of our applicants are registered voters. And would you say that you consistently vote in every election, or how would you describe your voting record?
I vote in every election for, since I could first vote, I haven't missed one.
Excellent. Thank you.
That was quick. Those kind of questions are going to help us get through this. Councilmember Lindsay.
Good evening, Mike. Thank you for putting your name in for the vacancy. I know you as liaison to the Parks Board, so I know your commitment to youth, and that's important to me, so I have no further question. You've answered that.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Good evening. Paul, let me turn my mic on, sorry about that. The state and the nation, of course, have political parties and warring factions within those parties. When and how should those issues enter council chamber? And if we do have a disagreement with our elected representatives in Olympia or Washington, DC, how might we handle that?
Well, I believe that the role of the Washtegul City Council is to take care of Washtegul's business, take care of the residents here as best they can, that that's their primary role. You know, one example that, you know, I brought up already was the train, the coal train issue, you know. I, I don't think that we, we should, you know, the city council should be weighing in on the wisdom of exporting coal across the Pacific Ocean to other countries, that, you know, that's not our, that's just not the role. But, but on the other hand, when it comes to impacts on the community here, you know, whether it be, you know, a huge traffic impact, you know, and a, you know, public safety impact, that, you know, that's, that's the responsibility of this council to, to the best they can for the citizens, to protect them and to make life, to look out for the livability of the community, so to speak.
Thank you. Okay, going to councilmember Plinsky. Guess who's last?
Hello, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Us councilmembers sit on boards and committees such as Public Works, Planning, Regional Fire, Transportation, Finance. Which committee would you like to be assigned to and why?
I've thought about that, and I, I'm thinking that transportation and planning would be, I would be, you know, something I'd be interested in, and would keep my interest in, and it's something that I'd, I'd have some background in, so to speak, you know, at least. And then, and then there's parks and recreation, I, you know, I still have a really strong interest in that. And public safety, that's, you know, I'd be very interested in doing that, you know, being involved in that also.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for your service on the planning commission.
You're welcome.
I know that takes a real commitment. I want to pose a situation for you and ask you how you would handle it. You're on the council, and the administration brings you a proposal for a public works project requiring city matching funds with the grant that they get for it, and proposes to use the city's unrestricted financial reserves for the city's matching contribution. What criteria will you use to determine whether or not you should support this project?
Well, first and foremost, if it's a, if it's a road and street project, it would be for safety. That's, you know, that would be a high priority for me. And it's, you know, we'd have to weigh whether, what the long-term impact is going to be, you know, what, what, you know, the cost benefits in the long run, whether that's, you know, you know, weighed against using those funds that might be necessary for emergency purposes or, or something like that. So, yeah, I'd look at it very close, and those would be the things I would be looking at to, you know, along with the discussion and, you know, and how, what everyone else thinks about it, and make up my mind on it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Before we go along, I do want to come back to councilmember Lindsay. You do realize by not asking a question...
Yes, I do.
You don't ask questions of any of the rest of the candidates.
I cannot ask the...
Any question that you ask has to be asked of all candidates.
Can I re-ask the question?
I'm going to give you a second opportunity to ask a question.
Can we vote on that?
Thank you.
It dawned on me after you did that that...
What do you perceive to be the most important issue for the children in our community? And what will you do to implement an answer for that?
Well, not to repeat what I've already said, I, you know, I think that after-school activities, such as a Boys and Girls Club, something like that, that they could go to, you know, to play games or, or, you know, get involved in art or music, something like that. I mean, that would be wonderful for this community, and I think that would really, really help a lot, keep them out of trouble and, and give them something to do that's positive, that's not, you know, and can be recreational and help them physically in that respect, you know. That's, you know, that along with... Yeah, that, you know, we've got, you know, we've got a community that has a lot, a lot going for it. I mean, we've got the rivers nearby and we've got several parks, and, you know, we're trying to do a good job of keeping them up and adding to them when we can. Yeah, I think that that's, that's what I would be interested in, getting some, after-school activities going for them of some kind, and that would be very helpful.
Is that coming? You're on the record now. Mike, thank you very much.
Follow me, sir.
Okay.
I'll be right back with you.
I'll grab this. I'll pit this down a couple more.
I think that should be added to Jennifer's resume. She's really good at it.
You really sequestered people away.
Good evening, Mr. Randall. Mr. Ellis.
Either way, it's fine.
I've got it typed one way on one thing and one way on another one.
I respond to a lot of things, Mayor.
Thank you for being here this evening. We do have a series of questions, as you know, that we're going to go through. Each council member has elected to ask a question of the candidates, and I've got two of the questions from the packet that you were provided earlier. We will be timing the answers. You've got up to two minutes.
Okay.
The timer will go for a minute, 30 seconds on green. It'll go to yellow when you've got 30 seconds left, and red means you're out of time.
All right.
First question that we have, what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and the community that you would like to highlight?
Well, I've been in banking for 26 years. I've acted as a department head, an assistant manager, director of member services, branch manager, vice president. I've also owned two businesses myself, so I can relate to the business community. As a citizen, I've reaped the blessings and sometimes suffered the disappointments of governmental issues that have come down. I've served on committees that I've lived in, worked mostly in charitable capacities, fundraising for Gormbeckers Children's Hospital, American Cancer Society Relay for Life... fundraising for Gormbeckers Children's Hospital, American Cancer Society Relay for Life, Stepping Stones Grief Counseling, Hazel Dell Parade of Bands, and myriad of in-company programs. I've been on the board of the Southwest Washington Credit Union for Kids Fundraising Auction, Hazel Dell Salmon Creek Business Association Parade of Bands, at the community church as a board member and treasurer for a number of years. Now that my child's grown, I've become more active in local precincts. This year, I attended the Clark County Republican Convention as an alternate delegate. Now that my son is grown and my time's not divided, I feel it's my civic duty to become more involved in things. I've worked forecasting budgets and staying within those budgetary constraints, project outcomes by collecting a myriad of different disassociated ideas and coming up with unified ideas. In other words, I can take a look at a lot of things and figure out a way to get through it. I look for the best solution to problems, explore non-conventional approaches. I went on a business call with my boss once on a prospect. Prospect said, "Hey, I need somebody who thinks outside the box." My boss said, "Well, you got the good banker in Randy. He's so far outside of it, he can't see it anymore." Now, I know that's kind of humorous, but that means that I'm willing to explore different options and not stay the same way.
Thank you. Second question is, what are the three highest priorities and/or issues that you believe the city needs to address? And how would you propose to address the issues?
I feel the 27th Street Exchange is one of the priorities facing this community. How do we provide access safely and fairly onto East Street off of Highway 14? I see it almost every day coming home. Traffic's backed up onto Highway 14. That is a big safety issue. It's something that needs to be balanced with the property rights of individuals. I'm not a big fan of intimate domain, but sometimes you have to make the hard call, and it has to happen. I think it needs to be balanced fairly, though. I believe the council and the city is on the right track by getting outside input. I think it's something that needs to be pursued. As far as the cost of it, you have to look more towards other funding besides what we can do, state, federal. And we're going to have to deal with the big boys on doing that, so we need some outside help in getting those contracts together, if that's what it takes. I think managing infrastructure core functions and projects without the big impact fees that we've received. County went through a lot of growth. We had a lot of impact fees. We had a lot of budget to work with. We don't have that anymore. So how do we keep a balanced budget forcing with the declining property values and declining tax revenues? 2000s have shown an interesting trend in municipal finances. Twelve of them so far in the year 2012 have gone bankrupt, Stockton being the last one. I think fiscal responsibility is one of the things that, as a council member, we have to make sure we adhere to. We can't spend money we don't have. Creating economic development without being too burdensome to business is something else also. We need to be able to create opportunities for businesses to expand and to grow. The age group in Clark... Waschugle has gone since 2000 from the mid-50s to the mid-30s. This is the group of individuals who have a higher income and spend more. So how do we get them to spend the money here to support the businesses, which then gives us the business taxes, something that we need to address? We're a bedroom city of a bedroom city. How do we keep the funds here without it going someplace else?
Okay. Thank you. Going to our random council questions. Councilman Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will pose a scenario for you here.
All right.
You're on the city council, and the administration brings you a public works project requiring city matching funds to go with the state grant that we've got, and proposes to use the city's unrestricted financial reserves for the city's matching contribution. What criteria will you use to determine whether you should support this project?
I'm not a big proponent of using unrestricted funds. To me, it would have to make sense, and making sense means I look at it as an investment. With what we put in, what are we going to get back out of it? Now, there are two ways to look at what are we going to get back out of it. Number one, are we going to be able to get taxes out of it to replace that? The other would be with the younger community that we have now, are we doing something that increases the quality of life, especially for our younger population as it grows? Those are the two things that I have to balance. But just tapping funds, I'm not in favor of that. It has to meet those criteria for me.
Councilmember Greenley.
What do you see as...
Nope.
I thought you said Freeman.
Greenley.
I did, too. I'm sorry. Councilmember Greenley. Thank you.
That doesn't sound like Freeman, does it?
It did, though.
And you did, though. Okay, it's not us. That's all I want to clarify that.
I'm on your side on this one. The state and the nation have political parties and warring factions within those When and how should those issues come into council chambers? And if we do have a disagreement with the Washington Legislature or the US Congress, how should we deal with that?
Laws passed are laws passed. Goes from the top down. We have to adhere to the federal laws. We have to adhere to the state laws. I don't think we should get involved in situations that aren't going to make a difference if the law is passed one way or another. Why should we get involved in something that we would have to fight or have them come up and say, "No, you can't do this"? I don't... The warring factions are the warring factions, and I don't have a political agenda. I'm not on one side or the other. I don't... I wish everyone would get along. I think both sides need to get their heads slapped together and come in the middle someplace. But it's a fact that we have to live with. How do we deal with it? You have to. Stay out of what... Pick your fights. We'll put it that way. Pick the fights that are going to make the difference for the people of the city. You know, if it's not going to make a difference for the people of the city, if it's something that should be voted upon or made decisions on on a higher level, let it go.
Councilmember Polinski.
Okay, us council members sit on boards and committees such as Public Works, Planning, Regional Fire, Transportation, Finance. Which committee would you like to be assigned to and why?
You know, what needs the most to be... I have a conservative background as far as finances go, so I think that would work well on a finance committee. My interests are broad. I don't have any one specific thing that I'm coming here for. I'm not here with a political agenda to say, "I want to be on this committee and fight for this." I think with my background on what I've done, I can contribute to a lot of them. That 32nd Street overpass, or the 32nd Street to 27th Street overpass is something that's really close to my heart, because that's where I live. I see that every day. I would like to have some influence on that. I'd like to see how that goes. I find that very interesting. That's about it. I don't have anything specific that I want to do.
Councilmember Freeman.
Would you repeat that?
Greenley.
Greenley, I heard it, I heard it. Thank you, Mr. Ellis, for coming tonight and putting in for this race. My question to you is, what do you see as the biggest challenge the youth of Waschugle deal with, and how should it be addressed?
I grew up in a small town, Longview, Washington, very similar to this. I mean, 27,000 people. We had to find our own fun, and not always was that good. You know? The youth coming up, we've gone to a young city. We need to find something for the kids to do, to be involved in. Otherwise, they will find their own fun. And, you know, children are good children, but sometimes making the right decision is not always the best thing in their view of what fun is. Now, is that a Parks Department's, is that a Works? Is that something the community center for the kids to get involved in? That's something we'll have to find out, to find out from them. I just know that I've been in the cities and grew up in it that didn't have anything. Children need to be stimulated. They need to have the boundaries. We need to give them something for that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lindsey.
Well, my question is very comparable to Connie Joe's, but what is, do you feel is the most important issue facing the children in Waschugle? And what would you do to change or rectify that?
What is the issue that faces our youth? Our youth are bombarded with things that I didn't have to deal with until I was a senior in high school, and they're dealing with it when they're in grade school. I mean, they're being dealt with the pressures of drugs and alcohol and promiscuity. They're being dealt with the aspects of constant entertainment instead of finding yourself. I mean, they're growing up with a society of instant gratification. You know, everything has to be entertained, and if it's not, let's make the entertainment. It's hard to be a child now. I'd hate to do it. I raised my son. He's 25 now, and, boy, some of the things that he went through and faced with, I was appalled. My nieces and nephews, things that they were taught, I was appalled at, just because it's like you're too young to deal with it. I don't think they're ready for it. So I hate to use the word morality, because that's not the word, but we have to give them alternatives to do things so they don't get sucked into this, because it can be destructive. I'm not saying that it will be, but it could be.
Okay. Councilmember McDaniel.
Good evening, Mr. Ellis.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming out tonight. My question is simple. Basically, we've verified that all of our applicants are registered voters. Would you say that you consistently vote in every election? Or how would you describe your voting record?
Most times, consistent. There are few that, quite honestly, I haven't really cared about, because it's like you're voting for the lesser of two evils. But when it does come out, I take the voter pamphlet, I read through it, I discuss it with my family, I discuss it with my friends, and make my decisions before it goes, and I use the absentee ballots. I have found the absentee ballot on my desk, unfortunately, after the fact of the vote several times. Filled it out, didn't mail it, being honest with you.
Appreciate your honesty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That lets you off the hot seat.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brent.
Good evening, Mayor, council.
Nice to see you. We have a series of questions that we're going to go through and ask. Each council member has elected to ask a question, and I've got two of them from the packet that you provided prior to the meeting. You do have a two-minute time limitation on the answers. We'll use the timer for that. You'll see it as in the green mode, up to a minute and 30 seconds. When you've got 30 seconds left, it'll go into yellow, and at red, it's all over.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our first question is, what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
Well, first, Mayor and council, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak to you about my potentially serving on the Waschugle City Council. I'm very excited about this opportunity to serve. I've been involved in Clark County and on a wider state level on many community issues and governmental issues, and I want to sharpen my focus to where I live, right here in Waschugle, which has been my home for nearly 10 years. I have 20 years, nearly 20 years, of experience in municipal government for two large cities and somewhat with the state of California. My professional experience in that area is particularly in municipal finance, land use, economic development. On financial matters, the city of Vancouver has built the Vancouver Hilton Hotel and Conference Center. I oversee the legal affairs for the board that runs the hotel, deal with many of the financial issues that face that hotel. I participated in the bond financing for that hotel, which is considered one of the most complicated bond financings that has been done in the state of Washington. I also participated in the bond financing for the Vancouver waterfront project, getting the money together for that massive changes to the railroad capacity there. Initially, I started with Vancouver as a land use attorney, and I still do some of that, and I'm widely experienced in land use, particularly development agreements, comprehensive plan changes, Platts, things like that. I just left this evening Vancouver's workshop on the coal train issue, so I'm sort of the in-house railroad lawyer for Vancouver on that, and I understand Waschugle has done a resolution on that, and Vancouver is considering doing one itself. My experience in municipal law and municipal government in general means that I'm going to think I have a fairly short learning curve. Honestly, I haven't been that focused on Waschugle issues, but in some ways, that's good, because I think I could take an objective new look at it, and I see I'm running out of time. I suppose in my community involvement, one of the things I've learned to do is to keep people together. That's one of my focuses, and I hope to be able to build a team with this council to make Waschugle a better place to live.
Thank you. Second question is, what are the three highest priorities and/or issues that you believe the city needs to address? And how would you propose to address the issues?
I've actually looked at the strategic planning document that you're working on, and I'm impressed with the work that's been done so far. I think where my talents are and where my focus would be are the areas I think Waschugle is in greatest need of. When we moved here almost 10 years ago, one thing that we saw as a drawback to the community is that there's not any retail here. There's not significant amount of retail, and I think that's something the city desperately needs. And here it is nine, 10 years later, and we still don't have a lot of new retail. I think another focus that the city needs is to, and this relates to the economic development piece as well, but I think the second, phase two of Highway 14 needs to be the top priority of the city, because once we get Highway 14 completed, I think that will attract a lot of new industrial, commercial development that would be very valuable to this community. And I think how I would do that is I would, I think, you know, I have pretty good connections with state legislators around here, and one of them here is here tonight, and I'm happy to see her here, is to go to the legislature and let people know that this is the highest priority of Waschugle, is getting 14 done, because I think that's a linchpin for our economic, future economic development. My third priority would be, I think, out of the box, and I think we need to look at things that where we can deliver our municipal services in a better way, and that involves perhaps some privatization and consolidation of services. I've done a lot of teamwork with the city of Vancouver, with other agencies, the county, school districts. I think I've reviewed a number of interlocal agreements where we join our forces and do better with our services.
Okay, thank you. We'll go randomly through the questions from council members, and we are going to start with Councilmember Shoemaker again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight. I've got a scenario for you here. The administration brings to the council a public works project requiring city matching funds to go with the grant that they got from the state, and proposes to use the city's unrestricted financial reserves for the city's matching contribution. What criteria will you use to determine whether or not you should support this project?
The first criteria I would use is to make sure we had adequate reserves to cover the city's, any unforeseen contingency the city may face, whether that's an emergency, a fire, a sudden drop in revenue. I would... I understand that the city's reserves are about 42% of its general fund budget. I think there is probably a little cushion there that we could probably use to leverage some of these grants that we can get. I know that Vancouver's reserves, and I do believe Vancouver is a pretty well-run city, is about 17%, and I think Camas is something similar to that, so I think we have a little bit more... We have some leeway there that we can, you know, prudently protect ourselves from some unforeseen contingency, but also leverage more projects with grants.
Thank you. Councilmember Polinski.
Hi.
Us council members sit on boards and committees such as Public Works, Planning, Regional Fire, Transportation, Finance. Which committee would you like to be assigned to and why?
Well, I have two ways of looking at this. Finance is where my... Well, I have two ways of looking at this. Finance is where my experience is in the government area. Also, I've been involved with dealing with the state auditor, and I understand the state auditor lurks around here, looking over our shoulder, just like they do in Vancouver. We have a former one here. So, I think finance would be someplace I could actually make a serious amount of, a serious contribution to, and land use is also an area that I have a huge amount of experience in, in two states, and in two different settings, both in the private sector and for the public, and for a nonprofit legal foundation that represented property owners agree by overreaching government regulations. Not to say the city does that, but at least I'd be on guard against an unreasonable interference in property rights. I would also like to broaden my experience, because one of the, some of the areas in municipal law I have not been tremendously focused on in my career, and I'd like to get some experience in that, and I think I could do that in this setting, is employment law, and also, or employment issues. I shouldn't say, I gotta get out of the idea that I'm acting as an attorney here, and I'll have that conversation with Don if I get that appointment, and I won't pretend to. And also, public safety. I haven't been tremendously involved in police issues.
Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Appreciate the fact that you contacted every one of us. I appreciate that an awful lot. My question to you is, what do you see as the biggest challenge the youth of Waschuggal deal with, and how should that be addressed?
I think there's not enough for the youth to do here, and I think that dovetails with my idea that we need more retail development. Now, I don't think it's particularly healthy for youth to hang around shopping malls and things like that, but I think we need to, I think some of the retail, the focus on retail, a movie theater, things like that, I think there's more that could be done there, and that would help with the youth. I could see a partnership with the school district that we could form to find out what they're doing to accommodate the youth, more parks, things like that. You could look at for creative solutions, and I've seen some things done in Vancouver where they've, you know, co-located a park with a school and things like that. I've done interlocal agreements with, I believe in that case it was Evergreen School District in Vancouver. So, that's the kind of thing, you know, dialogue with the school district to do what we can for the youth of our community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Greenly.
Good evening. As you know, the state and the nation have political parties and warring factions within those parties. When and how should those issues enter council chambers? And if we do have a disagreement with the state legislature or the Congress, how should we deal with that?
Those issues should, you know, reach the council chambers when there is a fairly close link to city government, and I don't know how often that happens. I suspect it doesn't happen as often as maybe this council has gotten into it in the past, but it does happen where there's a direct link. One of the examples is we've had the recent Supreme Court decision in the Healthcare Affordability Act. While that doesn't, at first blush, seem to be a big concern for the city of Waschuggal, Waschuggal is also an employer, and it might have something legitimate to say about where that goes. I can, you know, there are other examples that might have some linkage to city government, but I think there should always be a link to something about what the city government does before a city formally gets involved in that issue. When we have a disagreement with the legislature, I think we need, first of all, need to talk to our legislative delegation to find out what the lay of the land is, and try to work it out behind the scenes at least, a little bit, so things don't get out of hand and we don't burn bridges. That's never good.
Thank you.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. We've verified that all of our applicants are registered voters. Would you say that you consistently vote in every election, or how would you describe your voting record?
The last time I missed voting in an election was in 1982, in a, and that includes school bonds, everything. And that was because I was caught between California and Montana, and I just missed it.
Thank you.
In 1982, I was just barely able to vote.
I was only 25, so don't.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Good evening. What do you perceive to be the most important issue facing the children of Waschuggal, and what would you do to solve or change this?
Well, actually, I think it's an issue that's facing all children, but it's not really a city issue. I think it's our education system that needs some, and I don't really want to get into that, kind of going off on what Councilmember Greenly said. I don't think it's really a city, you know, in some states, cities do run the schools, but not in the state of Washington. I think we have, we have some issues with our educational system, but I don't want to get into that. I think it's more of what I, in response to Councilmember Freeman, they don't have enough to do. They need, we need activities, we need parks, we need, you know, partnerships with the school district, and that's, you gotta find things for them to do.
Brent, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's you out of the hot seat for a few minutes. It's very warm in here.
So, can I ask a question while they're being seated?
Uh huh.
Since our questions are identical, and whoever gets drawn first, should we just have them ask that question, or is that not allowed, because we're not following each and every?
Yeah, I think at this point, we're fine, just each of you asking the question.
Actually gives them a chance to readdress something that might have run out of time.
Yeah, I agree with that, Connie. I think that the questions are slightly different, and that allows different answers.
Michelle, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you to the, to you for the service to our nation. We have a series of questions that we're going to be asking this evening. I have two questions that were from the packet that you provided earlier, and then each of the council members has elected to ask questions as well.
Okay.
We do have a two-minute time limitation for your answers. We'll use a timer for that. It'll be green when you're, still got plenty of time to go, relatively. It'll turn yellow at 30 seconds, and then red once the two minutes is expired.
Okay.
The first question that we have for you are, what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and the community that you would like to highlight?
Okay, I suppose I would like to highlight my leadership experience. I was an aircraft commander, which is like a captain on a civilian airliner, and I was in charge of crews on a C-5, sometimes totaling more than 15 people, and I coordinated with maintenance, ground personnel, air traffic control, command and control, base ops personnel, and I believe that that skill of communicating with different people in different functional areas will serve me well as I adjust to council, council life, and it will be of service to the council as well. And also, in the leadership category, I was a program manager and dealt with government contracts. I procured software for the Air Force and was in charge of monitoring the contractual obligations of those contracts, testing, fielding, making sure they stayed on budget and so forth, and in light of all the revitalization that's going on in the city, I'm sure you all deal a lot with contracts and making sure contractors adhere to what you've requested, and I think that will serve me well as well. Finally, I'd like to highlight the characteristics of mine. I would like to say that I'm a very honest person, and I have integrity, and I come to the council with no hidden agendas, political or otherwise. I'm a clean slate, ready to learn, and hopefully to offer the council some fresh ideas and solutions to any problems that we are encountering and deciding upon.
Thank you very much. Our second question is, what are the three highest priorities and/or issues that you believe the city needs to address, and how would you propose to address them?
I would say the first one is to continue on the path that the council and the city is already on, and that's the revitalization efforts that are going on. I think we see it all around us, and it's wonderful. I'm looking forward to all the new improvements that are being done, and encouraging more businesses to come in, and thus, more jobs and prosperity in our community, and hopefully, not to the detriment of the environment, and in a very slow, astute way, following city ordinances and developmental plans so as not to affect neighborhoods, and that would be my first priority, is maintaining the current track of the revitalization efforts. Secondly, I would want to maintain a balanced budget and have fiscally sound practices, understanding that in this fiscally tight environment, there's a lot of people struggling, and resources are little, and trying to do as much as we can in certain focused areas with the little that we have. So, a sound and balanced budget, which the city maintains already, I would want to continue on that track as well. And finally, my third goal would be to make Waschuggal a destination city for residents, business, businesses, as well as tourists or vacationers. And integral to that is safety, great schools, the beautiful, continued beautiful environment that we have, and a vital economic area, and that would help draw residents, businesses, and more tourists. And those would be my goals, and hopefully, I'd achieve them by taking input from the public, who has put me in this position as a council member to represent them, as well as working with city staff, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Going randomly to council members, Councilmember Greenly.
The state, good evening.
Hi.
The state and the nation have political parties, which are, have warring factions even within the parties. When and how should those issues enter council chambers? And the second part of that is, if we have a disagreement with the state legislature or the US Congress, how should we deal with that?
Well, I don't think they should enter into the conversation. This is not a political position. We are representatives of the people of Waschuggal and looking at only the interests of Waschuggal. I don't really think that state and governmental political ideas should be thrust upon the council. I don't think that's our business, really. And the second part of your question was if it does come up?
If we have a disagreement with the state legislature or the US Congress, how do we deal with that?
Politically. If it doesn't have relevance to whatever decision we're making, I don't think it should come into the decision-making process. That's my answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and Councilman Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colonel and Major Dave Shoemaker, US Army retired, Vietnam Combat Vet. Thank you very much for your service.
Now, no disagreements between the two of you. For the benefit of the public, if you haven't read Michelle's resume, she is a lieutenant colonel with the United States Air Force.
And a pilot. We have that in common.
Previously a pilot, not right now. I stopped two years ago.
We also have that in common.
Yeah.
I want to propose a scenario for you. The administration brings to the council, while you're a member, a public works project requiring city matching funds that they'll use with a state grant, and proposes to use the city's unrestricted financial reserves for the city's matching contribution. What criteria will you use to determine whether or not you should support this project?
Well, I would want to take input from the public, for sure, with local council meetings, and as well as my local council members, and consult the city staff. They've been here quite a bit and are well-versed, as I've seen before, and are very good at researching a lot of the issues, and I would want to discuss and talk it over with them, and hopefully, come to a consensus on whether to use the money.
Thank you.
Councilmember Polinski.
Hi, thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely.
Us council members sit on boards and committees such as Public Works, Planning, Regional Fire, Transportation, and Finance. Which committee would you like to be assigned to and why?
Okay, that would definitely have to be the Community Development and Planning Committee. I just think it's very exciting, all the new things that are happening and all the construction that is going on. I know it's disruptive to a lot of the public, but I think it's going to really benefit the city in the long run, and hopefully, draw more businesses and people to the downtown areas, the port, and so forth. So, that would be a definite interest of mine. Yep.
Okay, and Councilman Freeman.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
What do you see as the biggest challenge for the youth of Waschuggal? Okay, let me restate that. What do you see as the biggest challenge the youth of Waschuggal deal with, and how should it be addressed?
I would say education, getting our education, testing and scores up to higher levels. I would say that's the biggest challenge, and I'm not sure how to tackle that, but I think that's the biggest challenge, because if they're not prepared and competitive compared to other schools, and when they're trying to enter college or go out into industry, I think that will be their biggest challenge, and so, we need to work with the school board and try and figure out how to get testing scores up. I think that's their biggest challenge.
Thank you.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Good evening, Ms. Wagner. Thank you for coming, and thank you for your service. My brother is also a lieutenant colonel in the Air Force stationed at the Academy in Colorado Springs at the moment.
That's where my bosses are.
We have verified that all of our applicants are registered voters. Would you say that you consistently vote in every election, or how would you describe your voting record?
I would say I consistently vote in all my elections. A lot of them, I was overseas and so forth, but absentee ballots and so forth, I have voted since I was in college pretty consistently.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Thank you. What do you think is the most important issue facing the children of Waschuggal, and what would you do to solve this?
Again, I think education is the most important issue facing the children of Waschuggal. Certainly, I think that we have a great environment here and some good parks, so I don't think that's a problem. I think that providing them a good education is our biggest challenge.
Okay. That concludes our questions for you at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you again.
She commanded what?
Good evening, Mr. Seacrest.
Good evening.
Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for your past service to the city. We have a series of questions that we're going to ask this evening, two of them from the packet that you were provided previous to this evening, and then each of the council members has also elected to ask each of the candidates a question as well. There is a two-minute time limi- There is a two-minute time limitation for your answers. We'll use a timer that we have up here that will, I keep saying it's going to glow green. I don't know if it actually shows green out there.
Yes.
Okay. So, it shows green when you're in good time, it turns to yellow at 30 seconds, and then once it turns red, the two minutes has expired. Our first question for you this evening are what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and the community that you would like to highlight?
Well, first I will mention that I've been on the Planning Commission, both here and in the city of North Bonneville, for quite a number of years. In my work as an engineer, I can point out that I've learned how to read drawings and read maps and understand what it is I'm seeing. And in the construction field that I worked in, I had opportunity to read contracts and legal construction language that goes into contracts. I became very familiar with that. So, there is that. During the time that I spent with the federal government, I was allowed to take quite a number of short courses in group work, in how to work with a group and to help the group to accomplish its aims and desires and reduce the amount of time and effort that was taken to do that. A lot of my time, I was a project manager, which involved working with small groups very intensively. And in that work, I learned to watch the constraints that were constantly in front of projects, that is, constraints on time, constraints on money, and constraints on people. So, I spent years working with that.
Thank you. Second question is, what are the three highest priorities and/or issues that you believe the city needs to address, and how would you propose to address the issues?
One that I'm concerned about is fiscal responsibility. I've seen a number of things in the newspaper that have made me wonder about just what is the process and what are the constraints and what are the issues that are before you people, the council, and the decisions that you make? And I might try to second-guess them and say, "I sure wouldn't have done that," but I can't really do that without knowing the details, the thought processes, and the constraints that you folks have. So, I see that as one problem. I don't know yet how I would address it. Another one that I might talk about is the lack of sidewalks around the high school. I see a lot of kids walking to school and from school in what I perceive as being a bit of danger from the traffic. And I would like to see more sidewalks. And so, that brings up the issue of, well, what are the priorities that the city and the city council have? Where does sidewalks fall in that list of priorities? I don't know that yet. And I'm sure it has something to do with money, with funding, and I don't know exactly where that is yet either, in terms of priorities. So, those are all things that I would have to explore before I could come up with a definite opinion of how to address it.
Okay. Now, we'll randomly to council members, starting with Councilmember Polinski.
Hello, thanks for coming tonight. Us council members sit on boards and committees such as Public Works, Planning, Regional Fire, Transportation, and Finance. Which committee would you like to be assigned to and why?
I'd like the Planning Commission Committee, mostly because I've had experience with that. I could understand what they're dealing with and perhaps even contribute.
Okay, moving to Councilmember Freeman.
Good evening. What do you see as the biggest challenge the youth of Waschugle deal with, and how should it be addressed?
Right now, I see that their biggest challenge is getting a job. And how it should be addressed, I'm not an educator, but I would have guessed that the way to approach that would be to offer young adults a chance to get some experience, even during the high school years, in some fashion of the work world. And say, there are words for this that escape me at the moment, but opportunities to volunteer in different industries, I think, would be a good idea.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Good evening. What do you perceive to be the most important issue facing the children of Waschugle, and what would you do to solve it?
Forgive me for saying that, I think I just heard the same question a moment ago. Would you like to give me another?
I can't give you another one.
She can't give you another one, unfortunately.
That's my question.
I think I would give the same answer.
Okay. And Councilmember Greenly.
Good evening. I also served on Planning Commission, but for a fairly short time. The state and the nation have political parties and warring factions within. When and how should those issues enter council chambers? And kind of as part of that, if we have a disagreement with the state legislature or the Congress, how should we approach with that? How should we deal with that?
My personal feeling is that I think that here in these chambers, the political party question and dynamic should intrude as little as possible. When it comes to dealing with our representatives in Olympia and in Washington DC, inevitably we have to deal with an individual who has linked himself or herself with one or other of the parties. Still, there are ways to communicate with those people that don't accentuate the party, but rather accentuate what is good for the city and good for the people. I think that would be the direction to go.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Seacrest. Good evening, Mr. Seacrest. Thank you for coming this evening. We've certified that all our applicants are registered voters. Would you say that you consistently vote in every election, or how would you describe your voting record?
I think I heard two questions. One is, have I voted in every election? The answer is yes, I have. And how have I voted? I would like to say that I have...
No, sir. I'm not asking how you voted. I just wanted to know if you considered your voting record consistent, or how would you describe your voting record if it is not consistent?
Ah, okay. I believe my voting record is consistently for what I feel is the most intelligent and involved individual for that particular office, best person for the job.
Thank you. And Councilmember Shoemaker.
First of all, thank you for your service with the Planning Commission. I'll pose a scenario for you. The administration brings to the council, while you're a member, a public works project requiring city matching funds that they're going to use with a state grant, and proposes to use the city's unrestricted financial reserves for the city's matching contribution. What criteria will you use to determine whether or not you will support this project?
Well, that's a very good question, and I will have to admit that I have some, but not enough, education on the issues surrounding that question to give a firm and definitive answer. In general, I would want to look for the best benefit to the city for the broadest number of people. And I would also try to look for any disadvantages. To do that, I think I would look for people around me who are educated, better educated than I, in certain of those issues, and look to them for advice. I'm afraid that's the best I can give you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seacrest. That concludes the questions that we have for you this evening so far. Thought it was a test. Thought it was a test.
Here.
Rose is good.
Jennifer. That'll help you deal with it.
Yes, you get to sit.
Been sitting in here. Good evening, Larry.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here this evening.
My pleasure.
Thank you for your service to the city, both on the Planning Commission and on the Volunteer Fire Department as well. We have a series of questions for you this evening. A couple of them are ones that were included in the packet that you received, and then each of the council members has also elected to ask an individual question. You do have a two-minute time limitation for your answers. We'll use the timer. It'll be green while you have plenty of time.
I know the process.
Go to yellow when it's 30 seconds and red when you're out of time. So, going right into the first one. Larry, what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and the community that you would like to highlight?
I have been a lifetime member of the community here. I've worked at Georgia Pacific for 36 years, a member of the AWPW, where I've served as vice president of the union and the E-Board and Standing Committee for several years over the time that I have been employed. I've been on the MERC team, the Emergency Response Team at the Mill, for 18 years, where I've been president, vice president, secretary, treasurer over the years. Been a volunteer lieutenant with the Waschugle Fire Department for 18 years. Been on the Board of Trustees for the Washington State Firefighters Association for 10 years, where we represent the 14,000 volunteer firefighters in the state and put on an annual conference in fire school in Wenatchee, and are involved in legislative processes and such at Capitol and in regards to the volunteers. I currently serve on the Waschugle Planning Commission, and my attendance record for coming to the meetings here have been pretty much 100% over the last five years, so I believe that I can make an easy transition into the position.
Our second question is, what are the three highest priorities and/or issues that you believe the city needs to address, and how would you propose to address the issues?
The three things I think are the highest priorities or issues would be the current fire merger. And I'd like to be able to help ensure that we make the right decision and take the right course of action that is in the best interest of the citizens of Waschugle. The second one would be economic development, by helping the small businesses thrive and grow to the size of business that they would like to be, and to attract larger employers that would produce family sustainable incomes and benefits. And the one I think is very important is visibility and citizen representation, to befriend the citizens through good representations of their wants and desires, and to be accessible and accountable to the citizens of the Waschugle.
Okay, thank you. Moving to council questions, Councilmember McDaniel.
First.
Now, not too hard.
Pardon me?
Not too hard at questions.
Oh, mine's very simple.
She has an easy one. Oh, my!
Good evening, Larry. Thank you for coming. We have verified that all of our applicants are registered voters. Would you say that you consistently vote in every election, or how would you describe your voting record?
Oh, I voted every election.
Okay, see how easy that was?
Yeah.
See if we can make this a little tougher.
Well, it gets progressively harder.
Oh, not that one. Let's go to... Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you for coming. How do you say your last name?
Waggoner.
Waggoner, okay. That's what I was going to say.
That was an easy question. Oh.
Yeah. Well, I've heard a number of people ask...
Oh, okay.
He caught us on that. We're going to have to call everybody back here.
But it's against the rules. You got to follow the rules. I can change my question now.
It's a good thing we kept him sequestered out there.
I'm always the rule breaker, huh? I've had people ask how to say Waggoner, and I wanted to say it right, so, thank you. Okay, here we go. What do you see as the biggest challenge the youth of Waschugle deal with, and how should it be addressed?
Wow, that's a pretty tough question. I think the biggest challenge the youth of Waschugle would have at this present time would be good activities for them to participate in on a, when they're not in school or having free time, having things available to them. I think that would make a bigger impact in the decisions that children would make, whether to do right or wrong. And so, anything that could be done to mentor and guide them in the right direction would be great.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to split it up. Councilmember Polinski.
Hi, Larry. Thanks for coming. Us council members sit on boards and committees such as Public Works, Planning, Regional Fire, Transportation, and Finance. Which committee would you like to be assigned to and why?
Oh, well, I guess I would have to say the Fire Committee with the merger. I think I have a lot of insight into that, and would be an asset on that committee due to my long-term with the Washington State Firefighters and National Volunteer Fire Council. I'd have insights to bring that I've gathered over the years through those organizations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Greenly.
Good evening, Larry.
How are you doing?
The state and the federal government are afflicted with, let me start over. The state and the nation have political parties and warring factions within those parties. When and how should those issues enter council chambers? And kind of in parallel with that, if we do have a disagreement with the state legislature or the Congress, how should we deal with that?
Well, I would think that dealing with the state legislature, you'd have to do with your legal counsel to see what processes we have available to us to resolve an issue. Sometimes you just have to compromise, and other times, I suppose you'd have the right to challenge them all the way. Not real well-versed on state legislature and how you do those processes, so I would be dependent upon the other council members and the legal staff here for guidance on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Good evening. What do you perceive to be the most important issue facing the children of Waschugle, and what would you do to solve it?
Oh, that's kind of similar to yours. I would think...
I've heard that before.
I think sustainable jobs and employment for children when they get out of schools is a very important thing for the city to look forward to doing in job creation and being able to keep people here. I'd hate to see our children grow up in a community where they have to go elsewhere to seek employment, like you see in some of the more, like Idaho, Montana, those kind of places, you see a real influx of people leaving their communities because they have to go elsewhere to seek for employment. I would like to see that we would be able, as a city, to entice others... would be able, as a city, to entice other companies to come to our community, to enhance our community to the point where our families could stay.
Hi, Larry.
How you doing?
First of all, thanks for your service to our city and a variety of activities that you participate in. Beyond that, thanks for your service to our community, which extends on into Camus, the Mill, and a variety of other places. You've done a lot in this community. And I particularly wanted to thank you for the very open and issues-oriented campaign that you ran against me when I ran for...when we ran against each other for council last year, two and a half years ago?
Nine, oh, nine, I think.
Fun flies when you're serving time, doesn't it? At any rate, I wanted to pose a scenario for you. The administration brings to you as a new councilmember and to the council a public works project requiring city matching funds that they're going to use along with a state grant to pay for a public works project. And the administration proposes to use the city's unrestricted financial reserves for the city's matching contribution. What criteria will you use to determine whether or not you will support this project?
I would...I guess my personal feeling is to tap into reserves unnecessarily would be not necessarily a good thing to be doing at this time. I'd have to weigh the benefit to the citizens of the city to make a decision to spend their funding or something that may or may not be needed if it does need to be done to enhance their living here. Excuse me. Must be a fire call. Yeah, I have to weigh that in the balance to see how important a project would be to the people, if it served all the people or just a small portion of the people, and the real benefit of it before I would, okay, using unreserved funds.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. That concludes the questions that we have for you so far.
I'm done?
For the moment?
I've got one last statement to make.
Pardon?
If you select me, I'm already in the cost-saving mode because you don't have to have another sign for the table. Saved you 20 bucks already.
There you go. There you go.
Go ahead and have a seat back in.
Already? A break already? Only an hour and a half in?
I've consumed all my water.
We are... I guess I don't want to be presumptuous as we go through this. Does council want to take a break into executive session at this point?
What's coming up? We're basically...the next thing on the agenda really is to vote, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'd like to have a chance to discuss amongst ourselves.
Okay. In that case, why don't we break for executive session? If councilmembers would like to take a couple of minutes to use the restroom facilities or get some additional water, let's try and be into Mr. Scott's office within five minutes. We'll round folks up. Trevor and Jennifer, if you would, join us in there as well. For the audience, while we are in executive session, and quite frankly, we have no idea how long this may take or may not take, if you need someone to talk to while we're gone, I would like to make sure and introduce our newest state senator, Ann Rivers. Thank you for joining us this evening. You are more than welcome to have some very intimate time with one of your newest members.
Is Rose going to stay here so we can leave her?
Rose will be here, yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to say that we will be in for 10 minutes for our first one, and we'll see how that goes. We'll send folks out if we need to.